My name is Greg Musial. I'm the chairman of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. Welcome to the December 10 meeting of our board. As we start every meeting, we'll start tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in reciting that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much again. Welcome as we move into our December meeting toward the end of our semester. The next item on the agenda is a roll call of visitors, which we do not do when we're on Zoom. We are on a virtual meeting because of the COVID-19 pandemic. We are by way of Zoom and phone calls allowing the public to participate in compliance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act. I believe six of the seven trustees are present on the Zoom call, so I will declare that a quorum is present. We have no awards and recognitions to present tonight. The next item on the agenda, as always, is our open forum period. The open forum period is an opportunity at each regularly scheduled board meeting for members of the public to address items of concern. In the virtual meeting setup, registration is required by Wednesday at 5:00 PM the day before our meeting. Nobody registered for tonight's open forum opportunity. During the time we have open forum items, speakers are asked to be respectful and not to address individual private personnel or student matters. As a general rule, the board does not respond in those settings to items that are already under consideration by the board or subject to other remedial processes through the policies of the college. With that, we will move then quickly to our first board report from the Student Senate, President Saylor Usher. Saylor, are you with us this evening? There you are. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg. Let me pull up my just your report. Okay. So yeah, this has been a fun semester. We've had a really good team at the Student Senate. We've added a few members during the semester, actually. We had a few new student organizations this semester. We had the Ham Radio Club come into being, and we had people talking about more clubs, so I'm sure we'll see some of those ones come into fruition in the spring semester. As far as budget allocations, we gave about $500, something like that, to the Model United Nations so that they could do a conference that they held in October. They actually were in the co-lab, and they had some catering for all their members. I think they had less than nine students, but it was still a good attendance. And then we also gave funding to the Graphic Design Club for their showcase that they actually held last year. Yeah, the graphic design showcase is really great. It's a good opportunity for our students to get exposure to people in the industry. And so we've had nine senators this year, and we were able to do all of the projects that we set out to work on. One of them was JCCC Gives. We received enough donations to provide gifts for 11 families totaling 43 individuals. And so it was over 100 gifts that we bought and were able to get out to people. And then our campus-wide committees, we've had senators sitting on the COPS Committee, the Student Sustainability Committee, and all of the other ones. And we've had people doing presentations at our General Assembly. It's gone really well this semester. We also spent most of the semester doing training with student senators, talking about how Robert's Rules of Order works and all of the other fun stuff we get to do in the Senate, like a lot of social media, professional emailing has been a big focus also, stuff that we'll eventually use. And just helping senators help their friends and everybody in the student body get acquainted with Zoom and Canvas and just all of the Student Resource Centers that are online. So the senator training has been also to help them, help their friends, and then have it spread through the whole community. What else? I'll say navigating COVID-19, we had a two-step plan that was, I think it was successful in my opinion, because our first part of it was giving ideas to clubs and orgs so they could ask for more fundraising. And the second part of it was getting the clubs' ideas to get them to collaborate with each other more. And so we did see a lot of collaboration. I'm not sure if the Student Senate really facilitated it, but I know that we were aware of all the collaboration that was going on, and we were a part of it, but I don't want to take credit for it. And we'll continue that project into the next semester while adding a few changes to it that I won't get into right now. And then what else? Oh, yeah, so we have a new treasurer for spring of 2020, I mean, 2021. Camille Mullings has been a senator this semester and the vice chair of the Budget Committee. And so now it's kind of natural that when we came to elect a new treasurer, she ran, and she's really experienced for it. But yeah, that's just about everything. We're wrapping up for the winter retreat that's on January 11th, where we'll kind of regroup for the spring semester and talk to everybody about what we want to do. But thanks for having me.
Thank you, Saylor. Is it still possible to contribute to JCCC Cares?
To JCCC Gives?
Gives.
Yeah. If you can go to, yeah, we do care. If you can go to the Amazon, there's a link to our Amazon, and I think if we still buy gifts there, then we can contribute. I don't think we're taking monetary donations past the second, though. But yeah, I can provide a link to that. Thanks for asking.
Thank you. Did any of the trustees have questions of Saylor? Okay, Saylor, thank you. Are your finals done?
Yeah, we're all worked out.
Okay. Good luck.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a report from our college lobbyist, Dick Carter. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I always start off my reports with a revenue picture, and Kansas revenues tend to trend in a positive manner again. That's even after the upward adjustment on November 6th from the consensus revenue estimating group. And so at the end of the month, November, revenues were up 1.1% over expectations. Now, normally, you wouldn't think that's a big deal, but keep in mind, they already adjusted the numbers up, and so those numbers were above what the newly adjusted numbers were. I think we can still attribute the health of the Kansas finance system to the CARES and Spark money that has been an infusion from the federal government. We'll see where that goes. There is a continuing resolution scheduled for tomorrow, debate in Washington, D.C. I think every indication says that it will pass, and there won't be any problem. The current spending authority runs out tomorrow, December 11th. Whether or not there will be an additional CARES package that actually passes with that, I think yet remains to be seen, but that is the anticipation that there will likely be another package that moves through at some point. Also in the news of state government budgets, Adam Proffitt returns to state government service. Mr. Proffitt was formerly with Kansas Department of Health and Environment in their Finance Division, headed up their Medicaid Division after that, and then recently this spring, left for the Kansas City area to work in the Finance Division for Amazon. He comes back upon the retirement of Larry Campbell, one of ours in Olathe, Johnson County former legislator. And Adam will be hitting the ground running for the budget development that will be offered when the governor gives her State of the State speech in January. With regard to leadership races, and just to kind of tie up where we are in the House and in the Senate, all of the races have been confirmed. There are 86 Republicans in the House, 39 Democrats, so that's two more Republicans than there were serving last year. In the Senate, the number stays the same, 29 Republicans, but 11 Democrats. That body has moved further to the right, decidedly more conservative. And all of the close races demonstrate that every vote does count, and I know that that's a big issue all across the nation that folks are dealing with. In the Senate, Senator Time Asterson was not challenged for Senate President leadership, and so he was elected by acclamation. Jean Solentrop from Wichita beat out Senator Carolyn McGinn, who is the Senate Ways and Means Chair for the Majority Leader. And the Vice President won in a three-way race, that is Rick Wilborn from McPherson. And the two other challengers in that race were Senator Dennis Pyle from Hiawatha and Senator Molly Baumgartner from Lewisburg. I think the interesting thing to note, when we compare what leadership looks like, it's a very Wichita-centric leadership in the Senate specifically. The two top positions are Wichita residents or Andover, Sedgwick County, Butler County residents. The Vice President is from McPherson, so again, you've got a central Kansas area. We no longer have a Johnson County representative in that leadership role in the Senate. We do, I'll talk about that in a minute. But when you compare how that looks for moving bits and pieces through the legislative process, that's a very important thing to note. The Senate Democrats did elect a new minority leader. That's because Anthony Hensley, who's been serving for more than 40 years, was beat in the general election this year. Senator Dinah Sykes was elected by her delegation to serve as the Senate Minority Leader. So we still have a Johnson County person in leadership. And quite frankly, the other interesting thing to note is that many of the Johnson County delegates who are in minority leadership are in minority leadership positions. We also have some over in the House. We have, losing my place on my notes, Stephanie Clayton, Brandon Woodard, and Ri Shu, all in leadership in the minority side in the House. The rest of the Senate leadership for Democrats would be Pat Petty out of Kansas City, Kansas, Jeff Pittman, who was serving in the House, will be the Caucus Chair from Leavenworth area, and then Marcy Francisco, who's been in various bits and pieces of leadership over the past several years from Lawrence. The House stays the same pretty much as far as leadership is concerned. For the first time in 150 years, which is about as long as Kansas has been a state, a little bit longer, the Speaker remains the same for the third term. Typically, there are, speakers might serve two terms, but the Speaker will be starting his third term, as will Representative Dan Hawkins and Representative Blaine Finch. Those are the top three leadership positions in the House. Again, we have an Assistant Majority Leader from McPherson in Les Mason, and then Majority Whip from the Derby, so Wichita area Blake Carpenter, and Ken Rogers as the Caucus Chair from Agora, Kansas. The House Democrats stay the same, Tom Sawyer, well, the top post does. Tom Sawyer will be the minority leader, but we see Jason Probst come in from Hutchinson as the Assistant Minority Leader. And then I've already mentioned several of the other names as it relates to folks in leadership. So Johnson County will still see some folks in leadership in the legislature, but it will be very interesting to see how things move forward. You would think that a similar-minded body in the Senate leadership would be in sync with a similar-minded body in the House. Our read is that that is not the case yet, and that folks are still sort of feeling their way through about what priorities look like, what pieces of legislation will be worked through the process, and in what order. I realize that we're just a few days after those leadership elections, but I think some of those cards were already in place. We kind of knew a couple of folks that did not have challengers, and yet we still have some figuring out to do on what specific pieces will be moving forward. We have to figure out what the legislative session is even going to look like. The Legislative Coordinating Council has met and discussed with Tom Day, who's the Director of Legislative Administrative Services, about what committee rooms will look like. They are ramping up their efforts to make sure that every committee room has audio and visual production capabilities. That is not the, most committee rooms do. All committee rooms can be heard online. I think they're trying to install cameras before the session starts. There is some question about who will be allowed in legislative offices or in the committee rooms. So there's a lot of unknowns as it relates to how the pandemic continues to be managed on what that's going to look like. I think we'll begin to see what some of that looks like as committee chairmanships and committee positions are announced and made, and as we get closer to the start of the session, when we take a look at what COVID numbers look like, I think we'll have a better sense of what the actual protocol of the legislative session will look like. Today, the governor appointed Lynn Rogers, her lieutenant governor, to fill the role of State Treasurer. That seat was vacated by Jake LaTurner, who won the second congressional district House race, and so that leaves now open a spot in the lieutenant governor's position. That announcement will be made at 3:00 PM on Monday, this coming Monday. So, Mr. Chair, that's kind of the most up-to-date information of what's going on in Topeka and kind of what we're looking forward to. I'd see if there are any questions that maybe I'm able to answer.
Looking forward to, and that we're interested, I guess. Maybe not looking forward to as this, things are going to be great. Questions from the board of Mr. Carter? Trustee Smith Everett?
It's not a question, but just a comment. Dick, I always appreciate your talking points because you give us little nuggets that you can't learn in other places, such as the cameras going in in the committee rooms, which as long as I've been paying attention to Kansas Legislature, they have been adamant that we couldn't have that. We couldn't have cameras in those, some of those committee rooms, and that was a reason to not have live video. So I'm looking forward to maybe the results of COVID is we'll be able to have those past COVID and all be able to take part of those really important hearings and committee meetings. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it, and let's get ready for this ride. I hope we're all buckled in.
Well, I know that wasn't a question, but I'm going to answer it anyhow. We still struggle on a daily basis with different committee hearings just to get the audio out. And if you've paid attention, you've been aware that even with some of the current technology, you would think we could do better. There are some challenges within that whole process, but thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions of Mr. Carter? Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Terry Slish and President Bound for getting me on. I had some technical difficulties, I'm sure they're my own, so I thank you for the help. Mr. Carter, thank you for the work that you do and the report here today. Do you have any idea who the new lieutenant governor might be?
Yeah, it's not me. I can tell you that. But beyond that, we've heard some names, but I'd prefer not to discuss that at this point. I think, in fact, I had a conversation with one of her staff members today to see if I could pick up any additional detail, and they're pretty tight-lipped about several of the rumored names, but we'll know Monday at 3:00 PM.
Same here, but I just want to see you dancing around it, so thank you.
Okay. And trustees, I've got gallery views, so if you raise your hand physically, I am going to try to see you. I see trustee Cook is raising his hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Carter, thank you for your report. In your item on big-ticket items, which I don't think you addressed, you did indicate there could be a push for a constitutional amendment under abortion. Are you anticipating, or is there any discussion for any other amendments to the Constitution in this legislative session?
Thank you, trustee Cook, and I apologize for not addressing those. I just repasted those in from last month's report because I think it all flows together, and so that's one of the reasons why I did not specifically address those. Senate President Masterson has already indicated in a press conference that this will be one of the priorities that he pushes through as far as the constitutional amendment related to abortion. I think that once you have one constitutional amendment on its way through the process, it makes it that much easier for others to follow, simply because of the majority vote requirement to pass a constitutional amendment. I think that you could certainly see one on education perhaps, and while there might be others, I hesitate to suggest that they might be realistic at this point, but certainly we will see that one, and you very well could see one on education.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, when you say a constitutional amendment on education, I assume it would be some effort to amend the provision of the state constitution that requires the legislature to provide suitable funding for K-12. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think you could see it along those lines as far as terms and definitions, and also who has the final authority of what that looks like. I think it's yet to be seen exactly what the wording might be.
Other questions from Mr. Carter? Not, thank you, thank you, Dick. Happy holidays to you, as this is our last meeting before the holidays. Our next speaker will be Dr. Jim Leicher, the President of the Faculty Association. Take it away, Jim.
Good evening. So tonight, in addition to addressing a few specific items, I'd like to offer some general thoughts as we wrap up an eventful year. Diving right in, you've heard me speak previously about FERPA, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, which holds colleges accountable for violating student confidentiality even when it happens by accident. This last week, about 50 people attended a session by Ed Lovett, Leslie Quinn, and Terry Easley-Heraldo, Chair of the Online Advisory Council, to learn about ways to guard against inadvertently revealing information that shouldn't be revealed while teaching online or hybrid. 50 is a good turnout. The session was recorded, and it speaks to our ongoing efforts to maneuver through this new climate, which I guess after nine months isn't so new anymore. Terry's done great work for us on these issues, and we'll miss her leadership next semester when she goes on sabbatical. I believe as part of her HR update, trustee Ingram will report the findings of the Juneteenth Task Force tonight. June 19th, remember, is the day in 1865 when slavery ended in Texas, and it's become a day of national celebration, not just for African-Americans, but for everybody who cares about racial justice. For the last several months, the Task Force has studied the practices of other colleges and conducted an employee survey, the results of which led to several conclusions. Among those is that educating our community about the holiday and its meaning should be part of our mission. Another is the sentiment expressed by a majority of those who took the survey that Juneteenth should be supported with a paid and additional floating holiday. What you'll hear later will not be the recommendation of the Task Force, but of the Executive Cabinet, supporting cultural programming but not of any paid holiday. I want to thank all the people who served, especially my colleague in history, Dr. Ty Edwards. Ty did exactly what an FA representative is expected to do. She kept the faculty well-informed at every step. I'm looking forward to hearing the discussion a little later. I hope you'll see it as an opportunity to tackle questions concerning inclusiveness and communication. Along that same line, I need to return to the topic of the Testing Center. This one is not going away. Since my report to you last month, I've been contacted by several colleagues, some of whom thanked me for my remarks, and others who said I missed the train on a few things. Academic dishonesty, which I focused on, is indeed a big part of why online proctoring makes us nervous. But just as important as ensuring students find the right answer without cheating is the professor's understanding of how they get to that answer. This is especially the case in math, science, and accounting, where students need to document their work as they go through the steps of problem solving. What professors are saying is that the tried and proven method of paper exams is still the most efficient way to track students' thought processes so we can assess and correct where they are making mistakes. Now, I'm sure you'll find software reps with convincing arguments as to how their product replicates that in a digital way. Actually, you don't need to find them, they find us. But I would rather trust our in-house experts who say it's nearly impossible. Without the help of the Testing Center, those departments' ability to test in their preferred manner has been hampered. You can easily dismiss this next part as apocalyptic, but I think you're encouraging a race toward mediocrity. Mediocrity in the form of Scantron graded multiple-choice tests, which save a lot of time, and which some of our peer colleges around the state are famous for. Now, the upside is that when word gets around that our courses are now easy, okay, if you want to seriously compete with those places in enrollment, that's one way to do it. However, good luck trying to repair standards after going down that road. I've been in talks about this with Doctors Bound, McLeod, and Weber. We have at least two groups with faculty representatives looking for solutions. The ABC will soon be involved. There are folks taking this seriously. The most important point I can make is that testing and teaching are inseparable. In fact, they're the same thing. What consistently makes JCCC stand out is that unlike so many universities where grading responsibilities are handed off to a graduate assistant, our professors assess the work themselves. In the past, the Testing Center did the proctoring, but the grading always belonged to us. Faculty Association's position is that testing falls under the same banner of academic freedom as does curriculum, as does pedagogy and assignments. Some instructors and departments will be quite comfortable with remote testing systems, others won't. For those who aren't, we'd like their choices to be respected, and more, we'd like them to be supported, which includes the appropriate allocation of resources. FA will be following this carefully in 2021. You'll hear from me again on this, to be sure. Shifting gears a little, there's been a fair amount of reporting in statewide media concerning the decisions of higher ed officials when assessing the risk of remote versus in-person instruction during the pandemic. As I've read statements by Regent's Universities and other community colleges, it got me thinking, if JCCC were to summarize COVID's effect on instruction, what would it say? So I reached out on our FA listserv for feedback. One colleague, who is both a student in a hybrid class and the mother of a face-to-face student, replied that both are, quote, "incredibly happy." Her daughter feels very safe on campus and would probably have dropped out of college if she had to do it online. Regarding her own Zoom class, this professor describes it as a "high-quality, engaging experience." Another colleague in the science area gave a more nuanced answer, noting that students in her online lecture courses are obtaining the same content mastery as they would in a classroom. Under that scenario, the benefits of teaching them face-to-face simply don't outweigh the danger. Her lab classes, where students have to work with kits and conduct experiments at home, are a completely different story, not the same level of mastery being attained at all. In those cases, four hours a week on campus for an in-person lab is a more justifiable risk, especially when it's in a class in a healthcare field where masks and stopping the spread of infection is part of the job. Therefore, if the question is, have our students received the same quality of instruction during the shutdown, the only truthful answer is it depends. Any generalization to the contrary would be wrong. But I don't think that's the right question. If we instead ask, have we done our best to adapt and keep people safe, that one we can answer with more certainty. Excuse me just a second, I've got dry mouth tonight. There are too many uninformed opinions about the pandemic, and I don't want to add to them, but one lesson we seem to have learned is that when the right precautions are followed, classrooms and other formal on-campus spaces are not significant contributors of spread. When I checked the Kansas Department of Health site about a week ago, there were several dozen clusters associated with colleges and universities. Residents halls and off-campus gatherings appear to be the top drivers of coronavirus in those settings. One could argue we simply caught a break because we're a commuter college with no student housing. Even though the worst may be ahead, and it's too early for congratulations, the fact that not one single cluster, as health officials define the word, has occurred here is a testimony to the good work of a lot of people. 2020 has been terrible by any standard. Of the top 10 deadliest days in American history, measured by deaths in a 24-hour period, four of them occurred this past week, right up there with 9/11 and the two worst days of the Civil War. I was interviewed recently by a reporter, asking me how this whole last year has changed my teaching. I gave a two-part answer. One, the ugliness that's been evident in the country didn't just pop up, it has deep historical roots that require explanation. In that sense, the pandemic has made me more cynical about the way I'll approach my subject matter in the future. Secondly, and strangely, though, it's also made me more sympathetic. I had more hair when I started teaching, and too many years of the dog ate my paper probably left probably left me jaded. But when that is replaced with my dad is on a respirator, well, it's a lesson in shared humanity that it didn't hurt me to learn. So maybe it's the anticipation of vaccinations and better times, or maybe it's just the spirit of the season, but I want to say on behalf of the faculty, thank you to everyone who got us through this year with relative safety. I said this to Dr. Sobchak back in March when he was heading out the door. I think I said it before this trip last summer, and it's worth repeating now. I believe we'll look back on 2020 as one of our finest moments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. I always appreciate the historical perspective. I'm reading the great influenza, and I suspect if we had better counting then, those might have eclipsed even the wilderness battlefield or other battlefields of the Civil War. But it is certainly well worth noting that we are in the woods, we're not out of the woods, even with vaccinations on the horizon. So, questions for Dr. Leicher. Lee, Trustee Cross.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Professor, are those your parents behind you in those pictures?
I would be pretty old for those to be my parents. One of them are grandparents, and the other are great-great-grandparents.
They're great.
It's funny for a historian to have dead people on the walls.
They're great photos. I thank you for your report. I also thank you for your perspective on the historical roots of some of the current social issues. I think it's apropos, and I think you and I have talked about over different meals or beverages about why labor unions in the North in the 19th century were aligned with the Democrats in the South. And there was a difficult realization for this younger man, an attorney, and the roots in racism that were there. So I appreciate that perspective, and I appreciate you being here tonight. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the full circle, Dr. Leicher, of your report. Back in June, you made a comment about how that's on cheek it would be to have the college make Juneteenth a paid holiday, and that in the moment felt right, and it was something that led to emotion in this exploration. You talk about the history of it, and, you know, the fact that, you know, the Declaration of Independence, 1976, and 89 years later, ending of slavery, actually officially aligned freedom for all. Before that, Black people were not free. And so that is so important about Juneteenth, is the fact that it finally put a marker that freedom for all actually meant that in the Declaration of Independence. So I appreciate your historical markers on that. And we still have Confederate flags celebrating the South. Lone Jack, Missouri, is a perfect example of a subdivision that has it in their plaque, where before you walk into the HOA or drive in, you see this Confederate flag. And so whether we have fair housing laws, we do, and that is specifically to steer Black people away. As I had a Black client who, that's exactly what happened. So it's very important to understand the meaning of Juneteenth and what it means to be free for all. Thank you, Dr. Leicher.
Thank you.
I don't see other questions, so thank you, Dr. Leicher. Happy holidays to you. I know when you get done grading papers, you'll be ready for a break.
If only I had one, Greg, but that's not going to occur.
Thank you. Next item, Johnson County Education Research Triangle, Trustee Cross.
Mr. Chair, we did not meet this month. We will meet again next quarter.
Thank you. Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, Trustee Ingram, president of that association.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. KCCT met this past Saturday on Zoom, following the approval of the minutes and the financial report. We did have the election of officers. The officers will remain the same this year as in this past year. I will continue as president. Vice President will be Mike Johnson from Barton County Community College. The treasurer will be David Marshall from Hutch. Secretary is Dennis Peters from Neosha County Community College. And past president is Michelle Ham from Pratt Community College. Heather Morgan, our executive director, provided the following information regarding her legislative update, which coincides to a great deal with Mr. Carter's earlier comments. The state revenues have been much better than were forecasted. The monthly revenue to the state is still down, but not down as much as was predicted. So the ending shortfall will not be as much. Cuts to community colleges still could be put back into the budget, but we will not know that for sure until the governor's State of the State address in January. And the makeup of the incoming legislature, as Mr. Carter commented, has shifted to the right and become much more conservative. So there are many new faces, and community colleges lost several key supporters. So we discuss the fact that it's very important for community colleges to find ways to reach out and interact with their legislators in these unique COVID times. The KCCT legislative priorities and positions include fully funding Excel, which is Senate Bill 155, protect both tiered and non-tiered funding, we support the passage of the Kansas Promise Act, continue to support and look for a better process dealing with transfer credits and program articulation, support a plan to allow for increased and better funding of concurrent enrollment, we oppose any potential or current unfunded mandates. And one of the things that I talked about earlier this year was the FAFSA completion, and we strongly support efforts to ensure all Kansas high school students are afforded the ability to complete a FAFSA. And then finally, we know that we are probably going to need to monitor the possible K-BOR discussion regarding mergers and acquisitions, specifically in the area of local control. If a community college wishes to pursue a merger or affiliation, the Kansas Legislature should be required to approve the final new structure and codify and statute how any taxing authority vested with the Community College Board of Trustees will be handled in the future. Heather and I also provided a short follow-up with the Higher Education Council. We reviewed the recommendations from the council. President Riddle from Cali County, who is also the council of presidents' president, discussed the report that was presented to K-BOR outlining the concerns, the concern of the community college sector in regards to the merger and acquisition, as I just mentioned. General discussion was held. We did bring up broadband access. We know that there are still, particularly through COVID, there's just a lot of communities that it's not equitable. We need to make sure that we've got broadband access so that our students do have access to any type of technology that they're needing. Mike Johnson from Barton County Community College commented on the reports nationally that K-12 grades and test scores have seen a significant downward movement since the implementation of remote learning. So we discussed that this could likely cause a spike in remedial education that will be needed for incoming freshmen to community colleges over the next few years. Final discussion was held around the Kansas Chamber 2020 Workforce Report. The Chamber is supportive of the Kansas Promise Scholarship Act, so we see this as an opportunity to work together, so that's kind of exciting. They want to increase retention of our highly skilled workforce and make sure that, once our students and citizens are educated, that they are remaining in Kansas. And finally, in accordance with the Kansas Chamber report, KCCT recognizes our responsibility in providing access and affordability to educate our citizens and get them into the workforce as quickly as possible. There's always work to be done, but we have a place in the post-COVID recovery. Many in Kansas see us as an answer to economic growth in the state, so it's important that we do not lose sight of this. Our next meeting is March 6th. We know that PTK will not be in person this year, but the plan is still out there, so I will keep all of you abreast of how it's moving forward. And finally, there may have been a couple of our trustees from Johnson County Community College on the call on Saturday. My understanding is Trustee Lawson was on that call, so we appreciate her attendance. And if there were others, I apologize, but Heather just was able to determine that Angelina was on that call. So thank you very much, and that concludes my report.
Sorry, I muted myself in between, and I shouldn't have. First, Trustee Cook, and then Trustee Lawson.
That's fine.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair and Trustee Ingram. Thanks for the report. I was on the call as well.
Oh, good.
I appreciated Dr. Leicher's comment about testing and teaching are inseparable. I was interested in the discussion that took place regarding an apparent decline, and particularly, I think, the discussion was math scores and perhaps reading at the K-12 issue. So I do believe that that's something that we need to monitor from the remedial side, and hopefully, hopefully, the testing will be, will prove better, more effectively as we move ahead. But I am concerned about that discussion on those two remedial areas. But thank you very much, I appreciated the meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to agree with Dr. Cook. I am very concerned about the declining math scores in the remedial side, and the need and some decisions that we're going to have to be faced with to make sure that we are meeting the needs of the students that we are receiving, and make sure that the student success is there. So I definitely agree with Trustee Dr. Cook. I do hope that in the future, some of the election of the leadership of the KCCT will be provided to the board. I think it's always important to have a diverse voice, and so I want to make sure that there's always opportunities for all board members to run for positions that we have liaison status in. And when there's a discussion, I worry about JCC's position possibly being different than KCCT, especially about this merger. And I'm not seeing the discussion brought forward to what position we have, but I'm hearing about our position after the fact, and I think that is worthy of a board discussion to find out where exactly we do stand on, and whether that's just a discussion or a vote, that is up to the board. But I think if we're going to put our hat in there and decide how the rest of the state is going to work, we, from what I heard, we are one of the bigger colleges, of course, and that has some consequences. There's some collateral damage with that. And when I listen to the perspectives, majority of the House and the Senate are more conservative now, so are we thinking in those terms? They have different end goals, specifically around some of their colleges and universities. They have more small teaching universities and colleges. When they look at this, they want them to, yeah, there are some colleges that are absolutely, like, please take us over. So if we get in the way of that, are we really listening to the needs of those communities? And, you know, representatives are going to get pressure from their hometowns to save jobs, to save colleges, and if that merger means that they get to stay open versus die, I mean, there's, that's, that's their decision, that's local control. So I, and especially, I think there's a lot of county commissioners that are pushing that as well. So, and we, I think we have to be very careful when we make comments in that meeting regarding... I think there was a comment about HR and how big HR is. And that's exactly the things that make tiny schools mad, when they just barely have enough employees. So it can definitely come across as the rich schools are poo-pooing on the poor ones, and I think it is worth a discussion when it comes to the liaison position. Do we need to, one, that if we have a leadership position with KCCT, and the other one, to represent the voice of JCCC, and those two may conflict, and they may differ, and I think we need to be able to have the representation for our college. And I would like to see those positions before they're turned in, because I think it made me want to attend this meeting to understand how these positions are being taken, because I'm not hearing those positions being granted a discussion in our board. So I think it was good to hear the outside firm confirm a lot of the importance of short-term plans for the state, and of course, to focus on short-term certification for jobs, that's something I've been harping on for the last few years. So it's good to finally have that mean something. And I think I've said my piece. That's everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Smith-Ever.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question was for Trustee Ingram, or maybe anybody that was in attendance. What was the discussion around the remedial math and science? Was it that we already know that the students coming in this term are significantly behind, or is it the historical numbers that are going down, with an anticipation, of course, of the students that are currently in a remote setting? I mean, most of the Johnson County schools, the middle and high school students are almost all fully remote in most of the school year so far, and I don't think it's the same equivalent education as in-person.
And I would respond to that by saying, you know, six months ago, I might have answered it differently, but today, I would suggest that it's both. It's both historically as well as moving forward, so.
And I would just echo, I think we should also anticipate this will be a sustained issue for us, because there are, I mean, I'm at the lowest level with elementary students, but we are already seeing the effects of six months last year, and then another six months this year. And when you don't have a child that can read by third grade, and they get up to high school, and they graduate, and they go to enroll at JCCC because they have this pushy woman at their school that tells them they need to do that, but they don't have the math and reading skills, this will be, you know, several years that we'll, we'll need to plan for that. That concludes my comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions on the KCCT report? I see, oh, Trustee Cross.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I had to step away. We had somebody at our door, and I had to go up and check it, I'm sorry. I don't know if anybody thanked Trustee Ingram for her service, but I sure do appreciate it. I always say nice things in public about Trustee Ingram, so she'll know I'm sincere. I think, I appreciate your leadership of this organization, that in my experience in local and state politics, has quite a bit of pull and influence in state politics. So I sure appreciate you representing us, and I think continuing good relationships that Dr. Cook and others have worked to maintain with that organization. So I thank you, madam, trustee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Lee. I would ditto that. I'm going to move on to the next item, which is the Johnson County Community College Foundation report. Again, Trustee Ingram is our liaison.
Yes, thank you. As foundation members, all trustees should have recently received a year-end letter from the foundation, including an opportunity to recommend new board members. Any current foundation member, which all trustees are, are encouraged to complete the recommendation form that was included and return it to the foundation. These can be returned in the reply envelope that was included, or be sure to email it to the foundation. The foundation's Board Development Committee chaired by past Foundation Board President Mary Birch will review all recommendations, and a proposed slate will be presented at the April 2020 Foundation Board of Directors meeting for review and approval. The next foundation meeting is the Winner Board of Directors, currently scheduled for Wednesday, January 20th, at 5:30 PM. We anticipate this meeting will be held virtually again via Zoom. Our Sum Enchanted Opportunity Campaign will be wrapping up at the end of this month. The foundation has a number of plans in progress for thanking and recognizing so many who were a part of this historic campaign. We know many individuals are still considering year-end contributions to support our students, and we are proud that these gifts will add to the more than $850,000 our amazing community has already given to support JCCC, student scholarships, and basic needs resources such as the Meal Share Program and Basic Needs Center. In closing, on behalf of the foundation, I'd like to conclude my report by thanking the trustees, as well as the entire community, including our campus community and tremendous supporters for their continued commitment and generosity in 2020. It was a year of many challenges, yet also a year of important successes. It also provided unexpected opportunities for the foundation to be innovative and introduce new ways for our community to engage with the college and support our students, many of which we know will be a part of our 2021 efforts as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Ingram. I think the $850,000 dollar number is incredible. Last year, we... Last year, we just broke a million for the first time ever. But there are expenses that are associated with putting on the actual event for 800 people at the convention center. So without those expenses, I suspect the net going to student scholarships is going to be a record amount. So money thanks to the foundation and the community who support that. Questions of trustee Ingram regarding the foundation? If not, we'll move on to the committee reports and recommendations. The first one is the Collegial Steering Committee. Collegial Steering Committee met this past Tuesday by Zoom. All of the members were in attendance. If you recall my report last month, we had asked members to come back this month with one big idea, kind of a global idea for higher education, and then a, an idea that would be more localized, maybe that's something that Johnson County Community College could achieve. We ended up with nine big ideas and nine global ideas and nine local ideas. The good news is we had really robust discussions about five of the global ideas. The bad news is that's all we got to in an hour. Very good discussions about academic honesty, as touched on by Dr. Leicher, developing a comprehensive remote learning strategy, formalizing an early college academy, focusing on some areas of promotion for the college that would assist in our building our reputation and building our enrollment. And those ideas took a little more than an hour and we'll revisit those beginning at our January meeting. So it was, it was a good, it was a good discussion. Trustee Snyder, you were there. Do you have anything to add to that?
I do not. Thank you.
Next one is Human Resources Committee report. Trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Human Resources Committee met by Zoom format on Friday, December 4th. Jerry Zimmerman, manager of benefits, introduced the members of the Paid Holiday Task Force. You do have a copy of that in your packet, so I won't repeat all of those names. Valerie Jones from the Paid Holiday Task Force provided an overview of their report. And again, a copy of that full report is attached to the HR committee meeting minutes. You will remember the task force met for the first time on September 1st with the objectives of investigating paid holidays at JCCC in general and specifically adding Juneteenth as a holiday. Task force members solicited input on the stated objectives from peers and associates through a college-wide Zoom town hall meeting on September 22nd and through campus-wide survey to 2,274 employees with 868 responses from October 19th through the 26th. Information received from those sources are summarized in the report. The survey results indicated that 59.2% of the respondents said that Juneteenth should be recognized as a paid holiday. 21% indicated that it should not and 19% were unsure. During the task force research, it did come to light that JCCC ranks near the bottom in terms of paid days off, holidays and personal days among other Kansas community colleges. Most community colleges provide more days off during the winter and spring break than JCCC. The conclusions which are included in the report are, number one, a majority of our participating colleagues support making Juneteenth a paid holiday. Number two, a majority of our colleagues participating believe celebrating and educating our students, colleagues and community about enslavement generally and Juneteenth specifically should be a part of our campus culture. Number three, a majority of our participating colleagues support adding an additional floating personal holiday. Once the report was submitted, Becky Sintliver took the report to Cabinet for review, discussion and to determine next steps. Cabinet had specific conversations around the three conclusions. In the end, everyone agreed that conclusion number two, participating, celebrating and educating our students, colleagues and community about enslavement generally and Juneteenth specifically should be a part of our campus culture. Cabinet recommended faculty development, staff organizational development, and the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force work collaboratively to bring educational programming to campus. They would like to see this programming including, include internal and external community partnerships similar to the Martin Luther King Celebration Host on Campus, the annual Japanese festival and previous Kansas Cowboy Jubilee. Because the summer academic calendar is short and challenging with a limited number of days currently on the calendar during the summer semester, making Juneteenth a paid holiday, which was conclusion number one, was not being recommended at this time. In addition, adding an additional flooding holiday, conclusion number three, when employees can select to take off any day of the year, seemed to miss the mark on educating and celebrating Juneteenth. Trustee Ingram indicated that during the Board of Trustees meeting in June, there were a couple of companies that were mentioned who were participating here in the Kansas City area who already provided a holiday and it piqued the board's interest in what we could do to provide some support for Juneteenth. When the report came back, the comments from our own faculty gave us a better understanding of how, as an education entity, we have to consider how that affects what's going on on our campus and indicated that it was a good reason to begin moving forward in the way that we did. She also indicated that when looking at the people who participated on the task force, it was a good example of what we all consider shared government and how important it is to have a variety of people at the table who can provide input. From her perspective, there, there was an idea that was brought forward by the Board of Trustees. It went to the task force. The task force is now reporting to the HR committee. The committee will report back that recommendation and this is how it will move forward. Trustee Ingram indicated her appreciation for everyone's efforts and looks forward to the Board of Trustees meeting and further discussions. Dr. Bayon indicated that the process worked as designed and he is certainly sensitive to the fact that many of our employees, the majority who participated in the survey, were interested in it potentially being just a paid holiday or a floating holiday. Yet, when we looked at the intent of the discussions, it was really about how do we build this from a cultural standpoint around our campus and community? So the proposed focus will be on programming for our staff, students, faculty and community, which is central to our mission as a community college. There were questions around the reasons Cabinet did not support adding Juneteenth as a paid holiday or adding another paid floating holiday to the calendar. The conversation continued discussing how staff and organizational development, faculty development, DEI could collaborate on programming, bringing in other external and internal partners, just as I mentioned earlier, and how that programming could be and would be measured. Further discussions ensued related to the steps of this process, i.e. task force providing their report to HR, HR then taking the report to Cabinet for the review and recommendation. Once Cabinet made a recommendation, the next step was to report back to the HR committee and then the HR committee representative to the board and report back to the entire Board of Trustees for further discussion and input. After further discussion and deliberation, it was specifically noted that the recommendation for programming from Cabinet included only one of the three conclusions brought forward by the task force. Ms. Sintliver indicated that the full task report would be included with the HR committee meeting minutes to review operational interest. And I guess that, that concluded the report of the task force. Let me clarify that. To review operational issue, issues, Becky Sintliver, Vice President, Human Resources, gave an overview of human resources services, HR compliance and regulatory initiatives, benefit services provided, HR employee relations, performance evaluations, posting of new hires and separations from the fiscal year. Colleen Chandler, Director of Human Resources, reviewed the exit interviews for employees who separated on calendar year 2020, quarter three, and the stay interviews for the employees hired in calendar year 2019, third quarter. Ms. Sintliver, Vice President, Human Resources, gave an update on the HR operational assessment currently underway. In September, the college hired an outside vendor, Campus Works, to partner with the college to conduct a comprehensive, objective, third-party operational assessment of the college's human resource department. The engagement utilized a multi-method assessment approach consisting of 38 interviews and five focus groups with more than 75 members of the JCCC community, as well as an analysis of over 100 documents provided by the college. As the HR department anticipates several leadership changes in the near future, it is anticipated the assessment will be of value to the new Vice President, Human Resources, and assist them in a potential reorganization of the HR department. Fender has been providing the college with some initial observations. It is anticipated a full report will be provided in the coming weeks to be shared with the future Vice President, Human Resources and the HR team broadly. Finally, Dr. Bayon, President, gave an update on the selection of the next Vice President of Human Resources. EFL associates assisted in attracting more than 30 applicants for a deep, broad, diverse pool of qualified candidates. The search committee met virtually with six candidates and were able to narrow the choices down to four candidates for final considerations. Each of those candidates spent time with the HR team as a forum, in a forum discussion, an expanded group of Cabinet plus a few others. And then Dr. Leicher and Dr. Bayon had one-on-one conversations with each of the candidates. He is hoping to announce the selection soon. The next Human Resources Committee Zoom webinar will be scheduled for the first week in February 2021. Date and time yet to be determined. I want to go ahead and, Mr. Chair, give special thanks to the Paid Holiday Task Force for their time and valuable input. And also would like to give a thank you to Becky Sintliver, who is returning from the college. We appreciate her service and wish her a happy, healthy and long retirement. Mr. Chair, while I have included my, concluded my report, I want to share something that was forwarded to me earlier this week by a constituent, and I will quote, "Against the recommendation of the DEI council, the HR committee decided not to move forward with a motion due to a lack of available holidays in the summer semester. This would turn Juneteenth into a floating holiday or one with the ability to be taken at any point, thus ruining the idea of celebrating Juneteenth as the anniversary of an incredibly impactful American historical event." Now, as the chair of HR, I just wanted to share that comment. Like I said, it was sent to me by a constituent. I felt like it was really unfortunate. That misrepresentation, misrepresentation is already out there. As never did, the HR committee come to the conclusion that we would not move forward with a motion. There was no motion. There was no recommendation. There were conclusions. If we go back to the June 18th board meeting earlier this year, we were being asked to look at the next day being a paid holiday. We had a different president at that time. We will have a change in HR leadership in the next month. We are working through assessments of HR and DEI. And I would just remind everyone that there is respect and sensitivity to this and all topics that come before us. And finally, I have not even mentioned COVID and the impact of COVID. So there will be additional conversations, or there have been additional conversations in the past week since we held our meeting on Friday. And I would anticipate Dr. Bayon to have an opportunity for any additional updates or comments that he would add. And that concludes my report.
Dr. Bayon, did you have any comments?
Yes, just, just a couple that we have continued the conversation earlier this week. Members of Cabinet met together with the members of the task force with the sole purpose of listening to each other, of trying to understand and to continue the dialogue as trustee Ingram has stated. From my perspective as president, these are, are, are complex issues that need much greater discussion and work as we build a culture of diversity, equity and inclusion, as we build one, as we build upon and deepen our commitment to DEI. I believe that as a first step in that process, we need to really address the cultural issues around DEI. And so that was much of the rationale behind concerns around moving forward with Juneteenth as a paid holiday at this time. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments on the HR report? Trustee Lawson.
Thank you. So I want to make sure when we go back to the minutes that the motion was we consider making Juneteenth a paid holiday for our faculty and staff. That was definitely from a policy standpoint. It changed to a program afterwards. And I had several constituents come to me and want to understand the instructions that were given to the task force. Were they clear enough that they needed to have a recommendation and not just a conclusion?
I'll let, I guess I'll let Dr. Bayon answer that, but there, there was no motion included in the task force report. As I see it, they included three conclusions. Do you want to speak to their charge?
So my question was, what were the instructions of the task force so that they know they were supposed to present a recommendation and instead they presented a conclusion? And so is this a procedural error that is being held against the task force? So I just want to understand the instructions that were given to the task force.
Dr. Bayon and Becky Sintliver has her hand up too. So I don't know. Becky, you want to go ahead?
I can. The instructions that were given is to investigate paid holidays and specifically look at the Juneteenth holiday and to report back.
Okay, so there was not explicit, clear recommenda, like instructions that they had to present a recommendation. So they chose a format that presented a conclusion and with semantics, they were nullified. Is that correct?
They were just, they were just told to report back after their research.
Okay, so when I was listening to the HR, I heard that because they didn't give a recommendation, that the cabinet recommendation, since Cabinet knew procedure on this, the procedure trumped the task force. So I just want to understand, so what you're saying, that the task force was not given explicit directions that they needed to come up with a recommendation? And yet, their conclusions semantically were now nullified, even though they were not given the instructions procedurally. So I just think that's pretty interesting to note. And then if you, if Cabinet knew that, where is the helping hand for the task force that says, hey, we have a procedure, this is the procedure. Can you please look at giving a recommendation because a conclusion doesn't mean anything?
And it was my understanding at the, at the June board meeting that you were asking for us to look into the, the ideal of a paid holiday and do research on the Juneteenth holiday specifically. And that's what we asked the task force to do.
Right. And then in the meeting, I heard a lot of people say that it was invalid because procedurally, they did not produce a recommendation. So right now, there's nothing to the board, even though the task force felt very justified in their conclusion that they were bringing their findings and the majority was, was saying that they want a paid holiday. And so now through procedural error, we're finding that there's nothing that's coming up to the board. So I just think that's interesting since the majority of the task force came that were black and majority of the cabinet are white and majority of, the whole board is white. So these are interesting opportunities when we look at DEI as to what that means to black faculty and black staff and black students. What is the message that we're sending? And I heard a lot of comments about education was the reason. And yet, we have Zoom virtual hours now, so reviewing past classes doesn't seem to be a problem. When we canceled classes for the Kansas City Chiefs because they won the Super Bowl, that was a pretty instant, you know, no, no board took a vote on that. That was, hey, let's close the campus and let's go celebrate. And when the KC Royals won the World Series, that instantly closed the school and canceled classes as well. So I just think there, there's a standard of not following the procedure. And then there's other times where procedure matters so much where voices cannot come to the table. And I think that needs to be noted, that they were not given the procedure because now we're talking that we don't have a recommendation because they didn't provide a recommendation.
And, and I believe Dr. McLeod would comment, if I may.
I, I wanted to speak to the, the question of there not being black voices in dealing with this matter. with this matter. I, I can't speak for the rest of the cabinet, but I can speak for myself as, as the lone black male currently on the cabinet. My voice was very loud in that giving people a floating holiday that might be celebrated as an extra day off for Christmas is not the answer to speaking to issues of race. As an educational body, teaching people about slavery, about the long history of deep-seated racial violence and social injustice in this country, if we are to truly speak to DEI and stand up in a way that makes us a leader in this space, it is to provide education, not just to our students, but to our community. And I don't know that that is served with a holiday that might be taken at any given point during the year for any reason that one might construe. And I did, as the academic on, on that cabinet, speak very clearly that I believe our role should be to help educate, and that our first opportunity should be to educate on Juneteenth, to create around that issue a, a day of learning and service for this campus that actually bears out and bears witness to us as a leader in that space. I just wanted that to be in the record.
Thank you. Sorry, sorry, so I still have some comments here. I noticed that in the comments, the report that was given to the task, from the task force, it stated racist comments, and I was really surprised that nobody in that HR Committee addressed the number of racist comments that were in the survey from the colleagues that, that took the survey. And I think that really needs to be addressed. The feedback, apparently there's quite a few racist comments, and when we've gone through recent HR training on DEI, implicit bias, I think submitting those racist comments that were anonymous to the program or to the company we paid for, for this training to say, your program didn't work. And for us to look at a policy about what does that mean if we are going in a direction where the board has committed in our board retreat about the importance of a culture that's holistic of diversity, equity, inclusion, and our culture at the college is giving us feedback that is really racist? What is the harm that has been done to the task force members that had to read these racist comments? And what is the policy around what happens now? And the, the training that we have, is it effective? I think, I'm not hearing the questions that are really important about that, and I did hear a lot of talk about, well, the reason the Juneteenth came about was because of business. Well, no, it didn't. Now, we are training students to be employees, and there's a lot of employees that already are on board with DEI and they're not afraid to lead, and we need to make sure that we are not coddling racist attitudes in our college culture that make it more difficult for them to be future employees of the, the businesses around us. So the discussion of having businesses is very important, and it's not to take away from the educational component of who we are and the academic programs that we have, but we're educating students to be employed, to get jobs. So there has to be an alignment about the culture that the employees are going to experience may be different than the DEI programs that we are focusing on, and we need to really get serious about, does DEI matter? Does it actually matter? Because I'm not hearing the questions come up from the HR Committee about that. I'm hearing a lot of, everything is great, we'll get through this, and you don't know that. There's evidence from these surveys that say there's racist comments, and the, the assessment that's coming from January also gives evidence of majority of those comments are racist. So we are looking at the importance of leading and making diversity, equity, inclusion important. And right now, the feedback that I see and what I heard from HR Committee, I don't believe that.
Let, let me try to put this in context for our viewing audience. The bullet point from the task force says disappointingly, a small number of our colleagues included disrespectful, unprofessional, and racist comments in the survey. There's no quantification of those as to which category something fell in, and this is in the context of a college that has updated its non-discrimination policy two years ago to include gender identity. It is a college that is, is in the middle of a DEI survey and engagement consultation that started well over a year ago. It's in the context of a college that just hired a new president July one, who has expressed his commitment to a DEI focus. It's in the context of a board retreat in November, when the number one item among several that we wanted to focus on was creating this culture, expanding, promoting, maintaining our culture, and it's in the context of a strategic plan where that will be part of the issue. So I am not going to read that bullet point to suggest that anything other than a very small number of employees at this college, whether they're faculty, staff, or administration, harbor anything other than good intentions toward a DEI. And I appreciate Dr. Baum and the cabinet having met with the Paid Holiday Task Force. I know this is going to continue to be a topic. I understand that a Juneteenth holiday fixed on June nineteenth would not, would be of no benefit to faculty members on a nine- or ten-month contract because they would be out of contract then for twelve-month faculty teaching in the summer. That would take a day of teaching away. Giving it a paid holiday as a floating holiday would mean it could be taken at any time, and I appreciate Dr. McLeod's comments that that doesn't seem to honor or educate or further the mission of what we're trying to demonstrate with support of Juneteenth. So I am comfortable at this point with the administration's recommendation, knowing that it will be revisited as we go through our future strategic plan and our retreat planning in January for the board. With that, I have Trustee Smith Everett and Trustee Cross having raised their hands. Trustee Smith Everett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been pretty outspoken about this, and this issue goes in line with our ongoing conversations about DEI. I, I agree with Trustee Lawson that I think that the directive given to the task force may have caused some of this confusion, and it's something that we would, if we had the continuity of one president over time, we, we maybe could have been more clear from the board what we were asking for when this came up in June to the president and make sure that task force understood that, and that's not the case. So, you know, we are now in the situation that I personally do not like the outcome. I personally don't think that what's coming to the board tonight for us to prove is the best case scenario. I really applaud Dr. Baum for bringing the two groups together. I think for me, separate of just the Juneteenth as a holiday, my biggest concern with this is that we had a process where a group of stakeholders came together, spent a lot of time discussing this and looking into this, and then they, they presented, and another group decided what to do about that that's being brought to the board, and that for me is a rub. I think Dr. Baum saw that, recognized that those two groups had some opposing views, had some different perspectives, and needed to come together. I think I would only vote in favor of this motion that's coming tonight if, if what Chair Musial just said is correct, that we are going to have this be an ongoing issue. We're not just going to let this be the only resolution about Juneteenth, because with a majority-minority representation on the task force, I think we need to listen to voices. I also think we can chew gum and walk at the same time. There is some symbolism in giving a holiday from a college for, for the community to say we have a holiday recognizing Juneteenth. There's symbolism in that, and at the same time, we can work on programming that really does embrace what needs to be addressed internally and community-wide about an understanding of Juneteenth as a whole, slavery as a whole, et cetera, all the things that mentioned, were mentioned by Trustee Ingram. So I, I personally would advocate that we go in that direction, that we not leave this where it is as the final say, but that it is a step in the right direction, but is not the, the ultimate conclusion. I also think that, I, I just want to echo something that has come up, came up in our retreat, came up tonight as well. DEI is, it's not a destination. We will not come to a point where we go, well, there we go, we are completely diverse, equitable, and inclusive. It's, it, it doesn't work like that. It is a continuum. It is a journey, and I think that when we reframe our understanding of it, we have to recognize that along that continuum are people on the front end and people on the back end of that, and that is going to include us as trustees, our cabinet, and our faculty and our staff. And as Dr. Baum leads us through and the board provides guidance, I think we need to be clear that it's not going to be a check, we've done it. It's going to be, have we gotten better today than we were yesterday? And is this month bringing us closer to what we believe is our diverse, equitable, inclusive selves than it was last month? And if we can answer yes, then we're going the right way. If we can't, then we can reframe things, but it's not about ousting people that don't see our way, it's about moving them along the continuum and ensuring that we are making strides in the right direction. That concludes my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Well, well said. Other, I guess, Trustee Cross, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you, and I thank the administration and really even Trustee Lawson's leadership on this issue. I really do appreciate her making it an issue and so forcefully making the case as a, my wife and I are lifetime members of the NAACP. By invitation, my ignorance was such that I didn't know I could do that just a few years ago, so I appreciate the issue. I do support Dr. Baum, Dr. McLeod, and the rest of the cabinet in this decision, and here's why. First of all, I just, I, I agree in part, in part with Trustees Lawson and Smith Everett, but I also, I think, as I heard the comments disagree in part, and I think those that have served and worked with me know that I enjoy being a contrarian, so here's why. You know, the Royals' decision in 2015, frankly and quite candidly, was something that Dr. Sobchak struggled over, and he will tell you, I was no great fan of his. Yet justice is what it is, and I rise or sit here today to say that we struggled over that decision, and that was a, it actually slogged over in last-minute decision as I remember it. The Chiefs, I don't remember that, I was sort of in shock for that one, so I don't know what we did. I know that we did close, and I don't dispute Trustee Lawson, but I, I know for the Royals in fifteen, I want to comment on that. I, I am a former labor and environmental activist on the East Coast. Again, my wife and I are lifetime members of the NAACP, and yet for me, this son of the university community and academic community believes that students being in school matters and educating our students and teaching them matters, and I guess they had a, the committee had a loose commission, but I'm not upset with it at all. I, I think the fewest holidays and days off, you know, I'm sure labor and everybody would always like more time off, but I think that means that we're working. We are a ladder of opportunity in the 21st century where students can learn and earn good jobs, and I think that comes from being in the classroom so we can teach them. So I thank the administration for reviewing this, I thank the committee for spending the time with this. I am a close ally of the FA and in all educators, and I don't really have any objection to this. I do agree, again, in part with Trustee Lawson and Smith Everett, but students and learning, learning comes first, and I think that's important. I do believe frankly, just so my position is not mischaracterized in the future, that this should be a federal and state holiday, and I would encourage all of our corporate and private sector partners to sue Espante, support a paid holiday. I think it's that important, I think recognition of it is important, but you know, when Dr. Baum briefed me on this issue earlier this week, it was hard to argue with. You know, the success of our students comes first, and the time away or a floating holiday just seemed empty to me. Does DEI matter? Yeah, I believe it does, I really do. Under Dr. Sobchak, we had our first minority ever on the board. Majority of us on this board supported that person, Trustee Henry Sandate, and he's a friend of mine. Moreover, we had Dr. McLeod and, and others that Dr. Sobchak found us to find the best available talent, regardless of race or sex, so I, I disagree in part again with Trustee Lawson's comments. I think we've had a wonderful record here in an institution of white flight that has worked to be progressive and honor its past and privilege from which it arises. So on balance, again, I support the conclusion of Dr. Baum, Dr. McLeod, and the cabinet, and yet I do pledge that this be an ongoing issue and that we, we continue to study it and pursue justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Just, Trustee Cook, before I go, I, I just, I think we ought to all understand that nothing is a checkbox and is over, especially when we're doing a strategic plan and our DEI report is coming through, and Dr. Baum is starting his tenure, long tenure hopefully, and we have a new HR Vice President. So I, I will certainly commit, Trustee Smith Everett, that I, I don't think this is over and this is the end of this discussion as part of our broader DEI culture. And, you know, to that extent, the, the proof will be in the pudding going forward, I realize that, and you can, you can hold me to that, and I know you will. Trustee Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the work of the committee. I appreciate the work of Dr. Baum trying to bring the groups together to resolve differences. I appreciate Dr. Leicher reminding, reminding us again of how important June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five was and is. I will say though, that there were some dates prior to that date where the state of Kansas and our country probably didn't teach, treat Indian nations very well, and I know that we're struggling with, how do we resolve a June nineteen day when, when not everyone is on campus and we're in between semesters perhaps? I know the summer session is probably ongoing, but I, and I appreciate Dr. McLeod's comment about it's an educational issue, and Trustee Smith Everett's comment about the culture. It's a cultural attitude that continues to hopefully develop and grow. And with that in mind, I would encourage the committee and the administration to look at perhaps a, a social, a social slash cultural justice day that could be held in a timely fashion, because I do agree with Trustee Cross in that where's the national and state law on June nineteenth? But there are other social and cultural issues that we could take advantage of and address through a comprehensive program, and so I really appreciate the ongoing discussion and study that I think we need to know more about it, and I appreciate the work that everybody has done. Thank you.
I might mention in response to that, that I believe Kansas State for the last three years has had a half-day of time dedicated solely to social justice issues, and maybe that's a model we could look at as part of this overall view. Other comments on this or the other HR? Trustee Lawson?
Thank you. So I didn't get a chance to talk about the floating holidays part, but I do want to make sure that we are not a performative board, that we are not, of course, we don't want
But I do want to make sure that we are not a performative board, that we are not, of course, we don't want tokenism. And to get rid of racism, of course, we have to take the first step or all of the DEI is just for show. And when there's racist comments that are stated, it creates a hostile work environment. I don't care if it's a small population and that's a way to devalue and dismiss the impact it has on black voices. I think that's in that's really telling and it need it doesn't matter the size or how many there are. If it's that small, then and it's anonymous, let's publish them. And if they're not that big of a deal, then let's put them out. Let's find out how many there really are and what they're saying. So if that's the board's attitude of it doesn't really matter that it's just a small group of people. The the people that heard those and had to read those have come out and said that they're harmed. So is that going to be disvalued, devalued as well that their experience doesn't matter? The floating holidays, of course, I mean, just taking example of how much we need to really understand diversity, equity, inclusion. We have a board meeting night on the first night of Hanukkah. And this board meeting was specifically moved up so that it's not close to Christmas. And we have 11 paid holidays. Are they focused on Christianity and favoring those? And are we paying public dollars that reward Christians? And if an employee has a religious holiday or service they want to attend, then they have to negotiate and navigate through other peers to get the coverage or ask their supervisor if they can have use their lunch break in order to do that. That's not what someone who celebrates Christianity has to do for Good Friday. So there's a real understanding that we have to look at these things. And when we as a board have put a a unanimous decision that we want a holistic culture diversity, equity, inclusion. We cannot have a hoax hospitality about that. If we are asking people to come and come to our campus and participate and be employed. And we are not actually a welcoming environment. I think that definitely needs to be addressed and that that starts with the board. That starts with the board not putting our board meetings on religious holy nights. So.
Let me speak to that because it is it was not placed here because of Christmas. The December meeting of this board is always the second Monday because the third Monday is later in the semester when faculty may not even be on campus. So to suggest otherwise is to ignore what we've done for every year that I've been on the board. We meet the second Monday in December based on the semester calendar, not on the Christmas holiday or any other religious holiday. To the extent that fell on the first day of Hanukkah, that's unfortunate. But the the suggestion that the no, somebody thinks that racist statements in a survey doesn't matter. Not true. The extent that we shouldn't take action to continue to ensure those don't happen. True. Anonymous surveys don't, you know, I I'm not sure what what your suggestion is that we do. But I suggest you direct those to the vice president of HR who handled the survey. Are there other comments with respect to the HR report? If not, we will move on to the learning quality report trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The learning quality committee did meet on December 7 via Zoom. And I had some trustee Smith Everett and trustee were in attendance at that meeting. I had some technical difficulties getting on early on and trustee Smith Everett chaired that meeting. So I think it'd be proper appropriate for her to give the report and I'll defer to trustee Smith Everett.
There's a lot of pressure.
I object. I wanted to give the nevermind, I withdraw my objection, nevermind.
Trustee Cross's objections are as always disregarded.
I'm trustee Cross. It's all yours. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We met on December 7 this week at 8:30 AM via Zoom for the learning quality meeting. We began the meeting with Jill Conan, who grant was granted a sabbatical during the 2019 full semester. The objectives of her sabbatical were to develop programming to increase awareness and the prevention of eating disorders for JCC students, faculty and staff, and the promotion of positive body images for JCC students. In addition, she aimed to integrate a depression protocol developed by KU professor, Dr. Stephen Lardy. Is that correct, Dr. Trustee Cross, who I believe you studied with him at KU?
Yes, trustee, thank you. I I studied with him and played pickup basketball games with him. Ilardi, yes.
Ilardi, okay, thank you. And so she studied his work and used it to implement into her work with JCC students. His protocol utilizes the evidence-based curriculum of therapeutic lifestyle change called TLC, which was designed to help individuals suffering from anxiety and depression. Her research included webinars, intervention training, volunteering with the NEDA crisis hotline, which she indicated was a really important and deeply affected her that experience on the crisis hotline. Treatment site visits and collaborating with other therapists on recovery and depression treatment best practices. She stressed that eating disorders are not are an illness, excuse me, not a choice, and reviewed risk factors and incidence rates. Since returning from her sabbatical, Conan has compiled a resource folder for JCC counselors that includes eating disorder, community resources, recommended readings and websites, counseling techniques and levels of care and types of eating disorders. She presented an awareness and and prevention segment during the spring 2020 PDD week, designed a bookmark listing resources for students and coordinated an eating disorder awareness week on campus. Conan also created with permission a TLC depression protocol for counselors to integrate into their work with students and a depression screening handbook workbook for JCC students. She hopes to continue her work on campus by creating an online TLC course and support group and by promoting positive body image concepts on campus. The pandemic has, of course, moved the provision of her work to the online environment, but she does plan to retrain and reintroduce these resources to counselors once JCC returns to on campus. She expressed her gratitude to the board for her experience. After her presentation, we moved on to the CSIT division updates. Doctors Mopin and Elder provided an introduction to the initiatives in CSIT being highlighted by Professor Weaver and Professor Lutz. Perla Weaver, CIS chair, provided an update on the technology diversity scholarship, which is available to women and underrepresented, upper, underrepresented groups pursuing an education in CSIT. This recruitment strategy is aimed at attracting women, Hispanics, African Americans, immigrants, members of the LGBTQ plus community and DACA students to the field. DACA students are not eligible for federal and state financial aid due to their immigration stat status, making this a really important resource for them. The scholarship is funded through the JCC foundation and 10 $1,000 scholarships were awarded during the spring 2020 semester. Employment growth is projected to continue, and this scholarship encourages underrepresented groups to pursue this opportunity and field of study. Weaver highlighted a DACA recipients experience and his gratitude for the award. We moved on and Andrew Lutz, IT networking chair, provided an update on both accomplishments and recent awards the department has received. The department was awarded a mentor links grant in 2017, pairing JCC with a mentor school to assist in the development of JCC cybersecurity curriculum. In 2019, the program was awarded the Center for Academic Excellence in Cybersecurity, CAE, from the National Security Agency and the Department of Homeland Security. In the last four years, the department has developed a cybersecurity certificate and 12 new courses. JCC cybersecurity curriculum is mapped to the industry standards necessary for the CAE distinction, demonstrating the rigor of the program. JCC is one of only two community colleges in Kansas with this distinction. Lutz highlighted the anticipated growth in the industry over the next 10 years in the Kansas City metro area. Finally, nope, we had two other. That's right. Two other presentations were Jessica Johnson with the SBDC director, the small business, somebody help me out, small business.
Development center.
Development. That's the old and development center director. She introduced a new initiative, the trade passport program. The SBDC has entered into with the National Association of Small Business International Trade Educators. And because we don't have enough acronyms, I've got another one for you, the NASBITE, a group which provides small businesses expertise in exporting and international trade practices. One component of the partnership with NASBITE is the training of certified global business professionals. And you'll never believe it, but they have an acronym CGBP, who are then equipped to provide guidance and best practices for businesses entering international markets. JCC currently has two staff members who have successfully completed the rigorous training. The trade passport website is a resource aimed at providing on-demand training, local resources and rapid expert assistance to USA-based small to medium-sized businesses that are focused on international trade as a pathway to business growth. This partnership, which aligns squarely with JCC strategic plan, external engagement, community partnership and community activities will assist the SBDC in their effort to increase export assistance by 50% in 2021 and provide professional development opportunities. Direct marketing and advertising are limited due to grant funding restrictions, but partnerships with local and state agency businesses and affiliations will be used to promote this service. A full program launch is planned for 2021. And then finally, Aaron Prater, the chair of the Educational Affairs Committee, did present several curriculum modifications for arts and design, humanities and social sciences. The new courses include UD, EdUC 224, Technology and Education for K-12 Educators. The cultural diversity designation included EdUC 221, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion for K-12 Educators. Course modifications included photo 201, photography 1, sorry, PHOT 202, photography 2. Dr. Cook, I've never listened to how you read these. I'm going to have to pay more attention next time. For business, a new course included law 277, paralegal internship 3. Course modifications included BLAW 261, business law 263, and law 275, paralegal internship 1, and law 276, paralegal internship 2. Program modifications. I am not going to read all of the other program modifications. They are in the rest of your packet and the notes from the learning quality meeting. That concludes my summary and I will open it up for any questions or comments.
Trustee Cook or trustee Cross, you want to add anything?
I would just say, Laura, that that was a terrific job. And the only thing I would add is that another part of uniqueness is that on the trade passports, JCC is the official Kansas representative to NASBITE, which I think positions us again very uniquely. So thanks, Laura.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I concur with Dr. Cook. Great job.
Any questions from other trustees? Thank you, trustee Smith Everett, surprise report. And it, those are tougher than management sometime with all the course changes. I just am impressed that we are reviewing our curriculum that carefully to modify courses, get new courses and to get rid of courses that aren't relevant anymore. So it is important that we report those to the public. I think that's a big step. Aaron Prater and Ed Affairs does a great job on that. We'll move on to the management committee report trustee Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just just back to the learning quality. I just wanted to comment again that the Educational Affairs Committee and Aaron Prater as chair, they do put in a lot of time with Dr. McLeod updating courses with all the deans and the faculty. So yes, we applaud them. It's great work. The management committee did meet at 8 o'clock on Wednesday, December 2 via Zoom. Trustee Smith Everett and trustee Snyder were in attendance with a large group of staff and faculty. There were several reports. By the way, that committee report is found on pages 3 to 14 of your board packet. Among the reports, Rachel Lear's associate vice president of financial services reported that the final 2020 tax levy rates and assessed valuations have been published by the county clerk's office. This is something that happens at this point in time each year. The college's final 2020 tax levy rate was adjusted slightly by the county to 9.191 mils. You'll remember that we had proposed 9.121 mils. And this is due to a change in the assessed valuation. It does not increase the amount of money that we'll receive from the county. Amount we will receive is what we presented. But that adjustment is usually done as the final assessed valuation is accounted for. Janelle Vogler, Associate Vice President of Business Services, presented the single source purchase report found on page nine of the board packet and the contract renewal report, which can be found on page 10. She also gave the summary of awarded bids between $50,000 and $150,000. That summary can be found on page 11. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President of Campus Services, gave the monthly update on capital infrastructure projects. And that report is found on page 12. We have two recommendations to present this evening. The first is in regard to budget development guidelines for fiscal year 2122. Ms. Lear's presented a recommendation for adoption of the budget calendar and preliminary budget guidelines. The purpose of the recommendation is to approve the budget guidelines in December. They'll actually present it to the full board, I think, last month in November. The guidelines and the calendar. We approve them in December so that they may be used by the college administration to begin the budget development process based on anticipated revenues and expenses. The guidelines are subject to adjustment as updated information is received over the coming months, such as changes in assessed valuation or state funding. However, however, upon approval, the tuition and fee rates included in the budget guidelines will be used by the college administration in preparing for the 2122 year. The proposed tuition and fee rates are unchanged from the current year for Johnson County resident students at $94. In-state resident students, $112. Out-of-state and international students, $223. And the metro would rate students $138. As a reminder, members of the community may utilize the open forum period of any monthly JCC board meeting to address the board regarding the college's budget. Community members may also attend the annual budget workshop, which will be held at the beginning of April. 2021 board meeting as well as the public hearings for the 202122 budget, which will be held at the beginning of the August 2021 board meeting just prior to the adoption of the college's legal budget. I guess I would pause there and ask Rachel if she wants to add any additional information to the the budget calendar or the budget guidelines. Rachel, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I don't think so.
Okay. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the preliminary preliminary guidelines for development of the college's fiscal year 202122 budget. And I'll make that motion. And I would say that the calendar is pretty similar to the past. And the guidelines that you've had a chance to review are guidelines that again, as I say, other than the tuition position, which we are recommending to be flat, there could be adjustments, assessed valuation as that information becomes clear. But but I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to approve the recommendation found on page three of the packet by Dr. Cook with the second by trustee Snyder. Is there any discussion? If not, I will just mention that I believe If not, I will just mention that I believe with the recommendation to maintain tuition at $94 a credit hour, that will mean over the past five years, we've raised tuition once, $1 a credit hour from '93 to '94. And we'll congratulate the administration on its ability to make that work, because I don't think other colleges, two-year or four-year around the country, can match that. With no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to adopt the recommendation for the preliminary guidelines for development of the college's 2021/2022 Budget, please signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? No. That motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, we have one other recommendation, and that's for a single source for document cameras. That detail can be found on page 9. The funding of this comes from the CARES Act. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification for the fiscal year 21 estimated amount for single perfection ADISPL for a total estimated amount of $243,267.19, and I'll make that motion.
Moved by Dr. Cook and seconded by trustee Smith Everett to approve the Management Committee Recommendation on the Single Source Purchase Report found on page 9. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. That motion carries unanimously, 7-0. Anything else, Dr. Cook?
That includes our report. I would defer to trustee Smith Everett or trustee Snyder for additional comments.
No comments.
Okay, I see head shaking. So we'll move on then to the Nominating Committee, which is trustee Snyder and trustee Cross. Page 15, 15 of the packet. And I know trustee Snyder has to leave here shortly, so you want to start, Paul, and then we'll move to Lee?
Sure. So you appointed trustee Cross and I, I believe, at the October meeting, and we met over the preceding time and tried to assess what our current committees were and who would be good fits moving forward. We tried to reach out to every trustee to get their preference on which committees they thought they could be the most impactful on. And we believe that we came up with a good list. I would note that we did not, we did not try to adjust officers, so we are recommending the same slate of officers for next year. Didn't make a recommendation, I guess, at all for that, but did adjust the committees as shown in the board packet on page 15, as you noted. I don't know that I have further questions, and I defer to trustee Cross if he has any questions.
No, I thank you for your leadership, Mr. Trustee Snyder. I think stability is good right now during, you know, the greatest crisis to face the nation in 132 years.
You're referring to the pandemic and not my position as chair is the greatest challenge?
I got lots of problems with you, Mr. Trustee Chair, but none I can articulate right now. Thank you.
Is there a motion for the recommendation, then we can take questions or discussion?
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Snyder, and then we'll go to discussion. I saw trustee Ingram's hand, and trustee Lawson will follow that. You need to unmute. Okay, trustee Lawson, why don't you go ahead if you can? No, you're unmuted. You're okay now, Nancy?
I am okay now. I wasn't there for a moment, so forgive me. My fingers are too big. No, I was actually going to provide a motion, the motion for, so I'm good.
Okay, all right, trustee Lawson.
Okay, I motion to amend that this board eliminate the committees for a committee of the whole.
Okay, there was some noise disruption there. Your motion is, please restate that.
I said, I motion to amend that this board eliminate the committees for a committee of the whole.
Okay, so you would prefer to eliminate the four, 1, 2, 3, 4 committee structures in entirety and remove and move those to a committee of the whole, correct?
Correct, as recommended by the retreat facilitators and the president.
I know, I think in the retreat, we agreed we were going to review that at the January meeting, but I may, I think that's what I recall. But is there a second to the motion to amend this report to eliminate the committees as stated there, Management, Human Resources, Learning Quality, and Audit Committee, and instead combine those all into a committee of the whole?
Point of order, Mr. Chair, for small boards, there is not needed a second on a motion, so we would just take a vote.
Well, we have always functioned under Robert's rules, and as you have indicated, it's suggested as an option on a small group meeting. We have always required a second on all motions. I will, I intend to enforce that practice absent a majority of the board being willing that every motion will be considered whether there's a second or not. Is there either a second to trustee Lawson's motion or a motion to challenge the ruling of the chair? If not, the proposed amendment. I learned today in my parliamentary procedure seminar with ACCT, doesn't die for lack of a second. It just essentially never existed, is what we were told. So we're back to the full motion. The regular motion is to recommend the nominating committee as found on page 15 of your packet, and trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for clarification and transparency, traditionally, how often have we reelected officers?
Traditionally, officers serve a two-year term, and then, under our policies, cannot serve more than two years in a row. Theoretically, I think under our policies, you could take a year off and go back into the same position. But all of the years I've been on the board, the four officers have stayed the same for a two-year period and then are all rotated.
Okay, and then my other question is, traditionally, does all that usually come through a nominating committee? Or have we ever had where our board nominates from the board meeting?
It has always been in a nominating committee in my nine years. I don't, I don't know that we've ever precluded nominations from the floor, and I don't think we've ever not adopted the recommendation of the two-person nominating commission or nominating committee. As you'll recall, this year, I think was the first time we actually had the board approve the nominating committee by an actual vote back in October.
Okay, thank you. I just like to know how those things go. Thanks. Point of information, actually, I don't think we did, or did we? Is can someone review the minutes? I felt like we were told about the nomination committee, or I might be wrong.
I believe you raised the issue that, and I raised the issue in my report, that the policies, the committee structure of our, of our board generally requires a nominating committee to be appointed by the, by the chair with the approval of the board. I asked whether anybody wanted to make sure it was voted on by the board. I believe in October, you wanted it voted on, and it was voted on. I do not have the October board minutes in, available to me at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, that's, that reminds me.
That refresh your memory?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. We're back to vote on the motion and to recommend, to adopt the nominated committee recommendations. All those in favor say yes.
Aye.
Yes.
And those opposed, those opposed, no?
No.
That passes 5 to 1, as trustee Snyder had to leave for another meeting. So it was five in favor, one against trustee Lawson, and then trustee Snyder not voting. Next item is the president's recommendations for action. The treasurer's report, trustee Cross.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I was paying attention. I apologize. Mr. Chair, the treasurer's report can, of course, be found in the board packet, and the board packet includes the treasurer's report for the month ended October 31st, 2020. Some items of note include at page 1, the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund Summary. October was the fourth month of the college's 202021 fiscal year. An ad valorem tax distribution of 1.3 million was received from the county treasurer in October and distributed as follows: Colon, general fund, 1.291 million for the general fund. The capital outlay fund had $74,185. Special assessment fund had $5,034. The total of $1,377,99 was distributed. The college's general education fund unencumbered cash balance was 80.3 million as of October 31st, 2020, on the eve of All Saints' Day. And the expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. It is therefore the recommendation of the college administration, Mr. Chair, that the board approve the treasurer's report for the month ended October 31st, 2020, subject to audit.
You so move?
I so move. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is there a second? Trustee Ingram, second, so it's moved by trustee Cross, seconded by trustee Ingram to accept the treasurer's report for the month ended October 31st, 2020, subject to audit. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just would like to thank Vice President Rachel Leers for the preparation of those remarks. The delay was mine, and I think our staff and administration, as always.
Thank you. I might mention that when we talk about the capital, the capital outlay fund, that in addition to our 9.191 general, general property tax mill levy, we also have a .5 mil that is applied that is used only for capital projects. So that is that additional amount. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed, no? That motion carries 6-0. Dr. Bound, the floor is yours for the monthly report to the board.
Well, thank you very much, as always. It's a pleasure to report to you on the activities and highlights from the college. Although I'll start with a, well, compared to where we were at the beginning of the semester at Census Day, when we were down 24% in headcount and we were down 18% in credit hours, it appears that we will end the semester at approximately 8% down in headcount and 6% down in credit hours. The last moving piece to the puzzle for fall semester is the winter session. And so of the courses that we offer in the winter term, we are 81% of capacity with those courses, with still room. And I'm going to highlight programs that have courses that are, have at least 40% of capacity left to fill in those courses. So biology, chemistry, environmental studies, geo studies, horticulture, and political science. So there are certainly opportunities in those courses for folks that are listening or folks that know somebody that might want to pick up some credits in the four-week winterum, as we call it, provides a really good opportunity. We are noticeably ahead of where we were last year when it looks, when we look at our winter session. And again, I thank our faculty and staff for their tremendous work in filling those courses. Spring term, we started the enrollment registration period about seven to 10 days later than we did last year. And so the numbers are skewed a little bit off from, from day to day. But we are 16% down in headcount and credit hours. And I know that our faculty and our staff are deeply committed to growing enrollment for the spring semester. Keep in mind, though, that we have a very high retention rate typically from fall to spring semester. And so when you're down 8% in fall, not going to say it as an excuse, it's not an excuse, but we know that of existing students, we start with a smaller number than we had last year. Nonetheless, our team is absolutely committed to growing enrollment as we approach and work our way through the spring semester. I'd like to take a minute and do some recognition as a couple different areas of recognition. As you know, we have for faculty a distinguished service recognition, where each year faculty have the opportunity to be considered for receiving this acknowledgement as distinguished service. And so we hire or contract with an external judge, and this year it was Brent Campney, who's a professor of history from the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley in Texas. And five faculty members will recognize this year Jay Anelk, who's a professor in history, Mark Cowardon, who is a professor of fine arts, Don Gale, professor of humanities, Melanie Harvey, professor of chemistry, and Andrew Lutz, who was actually recognized earlier in the meeting because of the, the learning quality presentation, a professor of information technology. In addition, we have a number of folks who retired, are retiring at the end of this year. And normally don't do this at every meeting, recognize those who are retiring. But there are a couple of folks that I want to recognize, and in order to recognize them, I feel like we need to recognize the numbers who are retiring. And so we have a number of faculty who are retiring and are so appreciative of their service to the college. Katie Gallagher in business administration, Jerry Gordon in technology, Catherine Carl in English, and Michael Robertson in humanities. And then when we turn to the staff, we have a number of staff. Our dynamic duo, who have been leading with Dr. Weber, Paul Kyle and Rick Mooreing, student success and learner engagement. Thank them for their service, as well as Debbie Young, also in student records, part of the student success and learner engagement team. And then finally, for those who are other staff members who are retiring, Renee Kyles from the Learning, excuse me, the Carlson Center, and Karen Langtry from IS. And finally, for those that retire yet in December, I haven't gotten to January yet, Bruce Hartman from the Nerman Museum of Contemporary Art. And so those are the folks that are retiring actually in December. Each of them have had a tremendous impact in their own way. Perhaps some are more visible and some less visible, but each has had a significant impact on us as a college and the students and community we serve. And then we move to January retirements. Kathy Wing, who works in human resources, is retiring, and we've acknowledged it earlier in the meeting today, but I want to again recognize our retiring Vice President of Human Resources, Becky Scentliver. Becky has, you know, been one of the faces and voices of this college from employee side for me from day one. And so Becky, to you and to Kathy, thank you for your incredible service to this college. So thank you all for that, for your incredible service. In addition, we've talked a fair amount in recent weeks about the test proctoring. You certainly heard from Dr. Leicher early in the, in the meeting and his comments, but I do believe that we are making progress and that the shared governance structures that we have in place and that the shared governance structures that we have in place are designed to address this. If we look at the work of ABC, if we look at in cooperation with the testing center, my hope is that in those conversations and that work around how do we maneuver through from from in-person, on-campus proctoring, the perspectives and the needs from a faculty standpoint, and the capacity and the desire to engage with faculty and serve students from a testing center. My hope is that when they really begin those dialogues in earnest, they'll find that they're not nearly as far apart as some of the email trails have led one to believe. And so I applaud the groups for their willingness to work together. Each division has identified a faculty member to work with Ad Tech and OLEC, the Online Advisory Council, try not to use the acronyms, that Dr. McLeod has asked each of them to identify. And they have identified each of their representatives to take on that difficult task of working through how do we use technology to assist us and yet still maintain the academic integrity that we expect for our students with our faculty, staff, supporting them and ensuring that we have an environment that certainly does recognize and value academic and student performance integrity. Last month in the meeting, I affirmed the work of OLEC and their definitions around the various forms of online instruction, meaning online, online hybrid, and hybrid courses. I affirm their work and continue to affirm their work as work that has been completed, that they have together in a shared governance structure, in a shared governance process, clearly defined for us as an institution and for our students to provide clarity around what each of those courses meant. I was not suggesting in any way, because they're the group that that is tasked with doing that work, should therefore reopen the discussion. I think we need to give that work time to bear itself out. And in a couple of years, look at and evaluate the effectiveness of of those definitions in making sure that we're clearly communicating to students the expectations. We say that we're absolutely committed to shared governance. And this is where, again, you've heard me say the messiness of shared governance exists and that we have to work through that. If we indeed believe, and we say we do believe in shared governance, and we have to allow these structures to work. If you have concerns as faculty around this, either from a on-campus proctoring or using technology to assist us with with proctoring, that you have the vehicles to go, the folks to go to from ABC, as well as your division representatives in this work. And I encourage you to work together with those folks, if those be the avenue for our shared governance work, and that we not try to do the runarounds, whether to Dr. McLeod or to Dr. Weber or myself. There's an incredibly talented team to carry on this work, and I greatly appreciate it to the work of OLEC, of the Ad Tech Group, and our testing center. In addition, changing subjects, you may have seen that the renaming work, the physical representation of the renaming work of the Carlson Center is well underway, that as old signage comes down and new signage goes up with the transition to the Midwest Trust Center, that process is well underway and will continue through the balance of this month and into next month. And then the the digital representation from an online perspective will continue over the coming months. And applaud the work in doing that. So as we close out this semester, as we close out the fall 2020 semester, my encouragement is to our students, to our students. We are here to serve you. There is still time to ask for help, but you got to do the work. And so stay strong, stay focused on finishing these courses that you're in. Finish them well. Finish the race well for this semester, if you will. And then we also just encourage, as you're wrapping up your classes, I know for community college students, they'll wait till the end of their courses to see how they do in their courses to register for spring term. But this is the time to do it. If you want to get the classes you want, this is the message for all of us to remind you, you want the classes you want, in the format you want, at the time you want. Again, whether some form of online or face-to-face, the time to register is now. For our faculty, thank you for your incredible work in serving our students and doing so well, for being masters of of teaching and masters of supporting our students. I am so incredibly thankful for your work. And as you are in the mad dash to the end of the semester, I wish you well as you finish the semester strong as well. To our staff, thank you for your work, your dedication to serving our students. So many of you are doing that remotely these days, and I greatly appreciate the way you have reached out to our students and engaged them. To you as trustees, I also thank you. I thank you for your dedication to this college, your dedication to seeing that we serve our students, serve our faculty and staff, and we serve our community well. So thank you for your leadership. As a reminder to the listening audience, the college closes starting on December 24th and will reopen on January 4th. Now, for those, we celebrate the holidays in different ways. It means different things to different people. And I recognize and acknowledge that. And I wish each of you, as we wrap up 2020 and begin to think and prepare as we move into 2021, I wish you a season of peace, a season of joy, and a season of health. Stay or get healthy, and we'll see you next year. Thank you.
Dr. Bound, we should have let that wrap up our entire meeting, because that was very, very nicely done. I thought maybe you would start your report by singing the 12 Days of Christmas version that started out the report from the Business Continuity Group. As I read that, I'm not sure it exactly fits the melody of the of the song, but it was fascinating to look at a review of the 12 months of 2020 and just one thing they added each month. I think it would be good exercise for all of us to do that and look back and try to remember what I've called the before, because it is, it is, I think people have lost sense of time. They lost some sense of place. They've lost some sense of relationships as a result of the pandemic and the changes. But I think you you put it well about what we can expect maybe from this holiday season, what we can expect from next spring, and the hope that that lies ahead. Other questions or comments for Dr. Bound, Trustee Smith Everett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to formally request, and you beat me to it, Mr. Chair, that every presidential report have at least one report done to the lyric, the lyrics or the melody of a song. And then we can just all guess what that song is. We can make it a game. So that was fantastic. I thoroughly enjoyed that last night. I agree with you, Mr. Chair, about watching the year progress, and that format was really, it takes you back. Dr. Bound, thank you for your very thorough report. Thank you for reminding us of what's important and hoping that 2021 is a better year. Could I formally request that you send us the list of courses that you mentioned that still have openings? If you could send that to us in writing, I would appreciate it. I assure, I know I would promote it on my social media accounts and would appreciate having those written so I don't exclude any that still have availability. That concludes my comments, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
It was interesting to me to hear that list, and most of them sounded like on, you know, hands-on type courses. And then the last one was political science. So I don't know what that says about the interest in political science at this point, but other trustee comments? I don't see any. That would take us to new business. I'm not aware of any new business. Not aware of any old business. The last item then is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a series of items that are presented as one motion and one approval. They're routine items or items that have been recommended by the administration that are routine, including the V R report. If any trustee wishes to take any item off the consent agenda, that will be done. It will be considered separately. So trustees, are there any items beginning at page 27 in the consent report that you would like to be considered separately? Trustee Smith Everett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I request that B4 be considered separately, please.
B4 is the grants, contracts, and awards on page 31 and 32. Is that right?
Nope, it's the change. Well, according to my.
I'm sorry, B4. I was looking at A4, 2021 Staffing Authorization Table for Full-Time Regular Staff.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And that is on the original H R report, not the addendum. Yeah, okay. All right, any other item to be considered separately other than what is listed on our agenda as B4? B as in boy four? If not, I'd accept a motion to approve the remainder of the balance of the consent agenda.
I think I was wrong, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry. I think I want the addendum. The one that was sent last night is the addendum. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I want that one off so you can leave the other in the consent agenda.
Okay. So what would be left off the consent agenda is item C, Human Resources Addendum, and that would be considered separately. All items under A and B would be considered as part of the motion, if someone is willing to make such a motion. Trustees.
Trustee Ingram.
Trust, Trustee Lawson moves, and Trustee Ingram seconds. The approval of the consent agenda, I, items under A and items under B, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no? That passes five zero. Then the last item on our agenda will be consideration of the Human Resources Addendum, which was emailed to the board members yesterday. Trustee Smith Everett?
I don't want to make too many comments about it. It's, there's some things on there that I've just had a hard time justifying with. It's an equity issue for me, and so I just wanted to be able to vote separately on it. Thank you.
Good. Are there specific items you want to note for the board or simply have it considered separately?
No, just have it considered separately.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Human Resources Addendum?
So move?
Okay, Trustee Ingram was first. I'll consider hers a motion and Trustee Cook a second to approve the Human Resources Addendum. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
No.
Trustee Smith Everett and Trustee Lawson voting no. Trustee Cross, I assume, I didn't hear you, but are you a yes?
I don't understand what we're voting on. I can't find it in the board packet. I apologize.
It would have come, it's the addendum, so it came separately yesterday. It lists a retirement and to employment regular, and then a number of employment temporary.
I've got it. I did not open it yet. I apologize. Terry had sent it. Let me review it. What are we reviewing?
Well, it was requested that we consider this separately, and we are voting on whether or not to approve the Human Resources Addendum. The specific concerns have not been identified, so we have, I will vote yes. That will make three yeses. Trustee Smith and Everett and Trustee Lawson have voted no.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair, I don't know the proper motion. It's a simple request. If Madam Trustee Smith Everett could articulate, I'm open on this particular issue. I don't understand the issue, with all due respect.
As I mentioned, I really, my intention is not to make a big deal about this. There are some positions on that addendum that I have personal issues with, because I think it's an issue of equity that I don't don't agree with. And I want to be able to vote against it for my own personal reasons. I will let others look at that same addendum, make their own conclusions, and vote for or against it as they see.
For an executive session, because this, the public doesn't understand what's going on. So there needs to be a discussion. And if this not wanting to be in a public manner, and this is an H R issue, then I request a motion for an executive session right now.
Well, we have a motion on the floor to adopt or to approve the Human Resources Addendum, and that is the motion. And second, it's on the floor.
If I may, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I apologize. With with deep respect and admiration for the two trustees voting no, absent any more clear explication, I I'm going to vote yes to approve the if anybody want any public confirmation that we don't all get together and talk about this stuff, here you go. Because I don't understand what's going on, so I'm going to defer to the college administration here.
The Human Resources Addendum passes three yes, two no, the no votes being Trustee Smith Everett and Trustee Lawson.
Actually, actually.
Four.
I'm trying to leave with four to two.
Four to two. I'm sorry. I can't, I didn't count myself. Okay. So that, there's no executive session tonight. We are ready for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Ingram, seconded by Trustee Cook. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? That passes six zero. We are adjourned. Thank you all for your time. And everybody have a safe and healthy and happy holiday season. We'll see you in January.